Good morning and welcome to the May 14th meeting of the City's Utilities Committee. I'm Councilmember Antonio Lewis, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined by members to my left, Councilmember Juan, to my left again, Councilmember Shook, and to my right, Councilmember Amos. The... Can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Been moving properly second, moved by Councilmember Juan.
Mr. Chair, the motion should be, the motion to adopt the agenda.
Yep, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
It's been moving properly second, moved by Councilmember Juan, second by Councilmember Amos. Please open the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays, the agenda has been adopted.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Been moving properly second, moved by Councilmember Juan, second by Councilmember Amos. Mr. Johnson, please open the vote.
The vote is open?
I think Mr. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland stated his vote. Councilmember Boone, do you want to?
Aye.
The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays.
We've been joined.
The minutes have been approved.
We've been joined by the Honorable Councilmember Matt Westmoreland and the Honorable Councilmember Andrea Boone. Mr. Johnson, thank you for giving me the public comment sign-in sheet. Today, we have three sign-ups but one person?
Mr. Chair, we'll honor that one person. Public comment states that three minutes per person.
Sir, so Ms. Barksdale, Ms. Lowry Barksdale.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm wonderful, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the City of Utilities Committee, I am Thalisha Lowry Barksdale, and I am a proud District 11 constituent and an active NPUP member. As we convene here today to address the urgent need for reform within our City Utilities Committee and regulatory codes, it's imperative that we confront the challenges posed by our current appeals process. While our system allows for e-funds in cases of billing errors, free credits, leak credits, and meter leaks, it fails to provide recourse for instances such as broken meters. This glaring omission not only leaves affected individuals without proper address, but also places undue burden on our cities, forcing them to resort to costly and time-consuming legal battles, often culminating in Supreme Court proceedings. The recent case between Judge Robert McBurney serves as a pungent reminder of the limitations of our current framework. It is unacceptable that our constituents are left to navigate meandering appeals processes only to find themselves at a dead end when faced with issues beyond the scope of existing provisions. Such systematic deficiencies not only erode public trust, but also perpetuate injustices that could have been prevented with more comprehensive safeguards in place. Therefore, I urge each of you to lend your support to the urgent overhaul of our appeals system. We must ensure that it is equipped to address a broader spectrum of issues, including broken meters, and provide swift and equitable resolutions for all stakeholders. By doing so, we can alleviate the strain on our cities, mitigate the need for protracted legal battles, and uphold the principles of fairness and justice that underpin our democratic society. Now, the broken window theory is a chronology concept that suggests visible signs of disorder and neglect in an environment, such as broken windows, graffiti, or litter, that create atmospheres that foster further crime and antisocial behavior. Because of time, I'm going to try to nip this in the bud. Bottom line is, we need to do something about our litter signage. Our litter signage is not attracting anyone, it's not doing anything, it's very, it's not purposeful. I would love to see, I would just love to see, in the context of littering, the ineffective littering signs, and also it has no enforcement, and the lack of visible effects to keep the environment clean and contribute to a perception of neglect and disorder. In turn, I would love to see us have better signage as in other municipalities that are in our surrounding areas. And I would love to see enforcement of that, because if we learn to prioritize littering and cleaning up our community, our neighborhood will look better, we'll be prouder, people will have a better attitude when they come in our vicinity. I mean, because you know, right now, when I grew up in Atlanta, I'm a Grady baby, 1965. When I grew up in Atlanta, there were consequences for littering.
Ms. Barksdale, I apologize for interrupting you, but you're 38 seconds over.
Okay, I'm done.
And I heard you fully, and you said we need to add broken water meters to the process. I appreciate you for that.
I did, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, okay.
We got to get to the next.
Okay, I got you. I just wanted to know about, if you don't mind, I would like to get one point of privilege. When somebody like me who takes off work to come and have, I have multiple conversations, I got to intertwine mine in, and to me, it doesn't make sense, because I'm talking about broken windows and litter signage, I'm talking about this. I just want us to come up with a different process, because I have some other things I want to talk about too, but I can't.
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate you, and I think myself, and I think, I know we're going to bring this back, so thank you again. We were able to have someone who was a little late, so she wasn't able to sign up for public comment, but if it would be okay with the committee, we'll allow her to come up for comment. Please state your full name, and then get into it. Three minutes, if so, Mr. Johnson, please.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak this morning. To the committee, as you know, today marks 11 months and nine days since Atlanta's public access channel Comcast Channel 24 has been in black. It was taken without notice to the community, it was taken without notice of Atlanta City Council or by vote by Atlanta City Council. I'm here today to, again, ask for, the cable franchise agreement is under the purview of the City Utilities. For the past three years, this committee has not taken any action either over the cable franchise agreement, and certainly not on Atlanta's public access channel. It is my belief that the mayor's office, the administration acted unlawfully in seizing a public utility from the people, so I'm here today to ask, again, ask, I would like the public access channel liberated and restored to the public by Juneteenth. It is our First Amendment platform. It can be done. I'm asking you to demand of the administration that they have to provide a plan and set a date certain on when that station will be restored to citizen access. It can be restored with remote upload access, you have communication departments, employees making $90,000 a year to run the government channel. Well, hire somebody and tell them that they will operate the public access channel until a new operator is afforded. It's easy to do. The CAB County Public Access Channel is remote upload, but I'm asking you to give them 30 days to provide citizen access to the public access channel. The other thing I'm here today to say is, we've been asking, not just for the past year, but for multiple years. The Bottoms Administration put forth a six-point plan in terms of how we build public access 2.0, how do we take it to the next level? And that plan was thrown away. Ms. Boone, in 2023, you addressed Lenise Harris, the former director of Channel 26, and told her that the administration does not touch the public access channel without council approval. So what happened? It has been since 1980, it has been a policy in code that any citizen in the City of Atlanta can request five minutes on the public access channel, and an operator would have to afford them that, they would have to facilitate them. So, power conceives nothing without a demand. I and others will be submitting channel time applications demanding access to that channel. We will also be asking, we will be sending it to the Law Department and the appropriate parties, but you should get that this week, and I thank you.
Ms. Coleman, I actually have a response and update for you as well. The first update is that this is a huge priority to this committee right now. Myself and Mr. Shook, we issued three different meeting time slots to the administration and the time for a work session. And so, I know I said I was going to give you all a date for the work session. Currently, it looks like July will be when we will have the first work session from the dates. The next meeting, I'll have the exact date, but we're looking at between July 29th and 31st right now for the first work session. I know that was a big deal, a big thing for us. Also, they're looking to hire someone to work independently on this, and as soon as they, they're going to hire a consultant before that, and so those are two updates for you. I appreciate you.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, for that, but that is too little, too late. What I'm asking for is restore citizen access. You took it without a plan, a work session, we're going to sit around and talk about it in July? How is that acceptable? I'm saying you took it without a plan, I'm saying, put a plan in place, and we want the public access channel liberated and restored to citizen access by Juneteenth, and we will be following up on that demand.
Well, I don't want to give you any false hope, that won't happen, but I appreciate you.
It won't happen because you don't want it to happen, because you haven't made the ask, and I thank you, sir. I thank you.
Thank you. We have no more speakers signed up for public comment today. Mr. Johnson, we can go into a presentation of our updates. We have a presentation from the Public Works, the quarterly update from the Public Works Department.
Good morning, Chairman Lewis and Councilmembers. Pleasure to be with you today. I'm Kintora Garman, interim commissioner for the Department of Public Works. I'm going to be delivering our quarterly report for FY '24, quarter three. I'm going to try to keep this within 15 to 20 minutes, so I will try to move expeditionally through the slides, but I understand that we'll have dialogue afterwards. First, we're going to go over our priorities and accomplishments for the Department of Public Works. We have listed some of the department's priorities and accomplishments on the slide up in front of you from previous quarters, including the onboarding of a fleet service director. We've also made multiple technological advancements, including near completion of a fleet service command center build-out. You recall about a year ago, we had the same build-out for a command center focused on solid waste services and special operations. Also, the integration of city detect and AI and computer vision technology, showing that we are devoted to innovation within the Department of Public Works, and the implementation of Rubicon routing software that is used for route optimization, and we're very near completion of the optimization phase for Rubicon. Progressing forward to the performance management area of the department, if you recall about a year and a half ago, I think, we developed a QAQC inspection team that has paid dividends in evaluation of the work that we do in addition to our contractors. We've completed over 1,400 evaluations by that team. The two largest areas evaluated were scheduled maintenance and curbside collection. We're running about a 35% clip above target in those QAQC evaluations. Also, about a 25% clip above target for miles in relation to those evaluations. In relation to those inspections, evaluation scores progressively increased for Ed Castro Landscape, and also the scores progressively increased for the City of Atlanta Internal Right-of-Way Crews. Those are our internal workers. Of the 13,000-plus cases created from January to March of 2024, less than 3% of those cases created were closed prematurely or escalated. I want to point out that not all cases, well, not all cases are complaints. So as we progress to our next slide, you will see that less than 2% of the total cases that came to DPW were in relation to complaints. Those were a total of 268 complaints, but again, less than 2% of the total. Slide in front of you gives a breakdown by problem type. So of those 268 complaints, those were primarily focused on missed residential garbage, missed yard trimmings, and are not collected but put back correctly. But again, less than 2% of the total. The next slide shows that DPW closed 99% of all cases created from January to March. This is a 10% increase from last quarter. Again, I want to note it is a 10% increase from last quarter. 80% of all cases were resolved within SLA, this is a 16% increase from last quarter. I want to note that our telematics software, which was installed again over a year ago, and we're still working through the progression optimization of that, which gives us a deeper dive into the operations specific to solid waste services, and again, special operations is included in that. The total number of solid waste routes completed by Rubicon, again, the telematics software for January 2024, were 14,000. This is 97% of the total. And then the total number of solid waste routes completed in February was at 15,032, again, 96% of the total. Want to stress there that there is just a little bit of meat left on the bone with 3% to 4%, and we intend to obtain that, but I think 96% to 97% speaks to the good work that we are doing. And for March, it was at 14,000, which gave us our highest percentage completion of 98%. Moving to the Office of Solid Waste Services. The slide in front of you gives performance by zip code. Want to point out that replacement carts was the most requested service from January 2024 to March 2024. This slide shows the tonnage of trash and recycling yard waste collected for all service areas. The overall total tonnage collected decreased by 7% from last quarter. Garbage tonnage decreased by 3%. Proud to say that recycling tonnage increased by 2%, and yard trimming tonnage decreased by 13%. This slide gives you a further breakdown of the collective tonnage citywide for all curbside collections. Continuing to talk about special operations collection performance, this particular part of DPW handled over 8,000 cases. 97% were resolved during the reporting period. The top four cases requests were for trash carts. We receive over 1,500 requests per month to replace damaged or stolen carts. This is consistent with what I shared earlier with the breakdown by zip code. On this slide, we can see that 7,858 miles of right-of-way were swept from January to March of 2024. This is 4% more miles than last quarter. Again, DPW showing that we know how to move the needle forward. In November of 2023, we serviced over 2,800 miles of right-of-way for street sweeping. Progressing to the next slide shows that DPW closed 98% of all solid waste cases from October to December of 2023, and 90% of all cases were resolved within SLA. Continuing to talk about our suite teams' performance, we closed 67% of the 646 cases created for this period. Would like to say that showing our efforts to improve in this area, we have onboarded three new officers to this team. We should have significantly increased the percentage of cases closed within SLA. On this slide, you will see that during the third quarter, our suite team performed over 3,100 inspections. Again, our efforts to right-size that team will show improvement in the near future. Progressing to bulk collections. We have handled nearly 8,800 cases this reporting period, averaging 146 bulk collections per day. This is 677 more requests than last quarter, showing an 8% increase. Continuing to progress forward to Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission, KABC. During quarter three, KABC hosted 35 community cleanups with 307 volunteers, 524 volunteer hours, and there were over 21 miles cleaned and more than five tons of trash collected. Moving to another division of DPW, the Office of Fleet Services. In FY '24, quarter two, fleet completed 4,550 internal repairs. By comparison, in FY '24, quarter three, fleet completed 4,426 internal repairs, less than a 1% decrease from quarter two. Want to point out that 83% of all repairs were completed within two weeks, a 1% increase from Q2. This slide goes over pending internal repairs. Pending internal repairs were 518. This is an 8% decrease from 560 at the end of FY '24, quarter two. Total number of pending repairs, and this again, this is in-house commercial and accidents, decreased by 8%. This slide shows that in FY '24, quarter three, 552 commercial repairs were completed. This is 123, meaning 29% more, and that's an increase than FY '24, quarter two. Continuing to progress forward in relation to fleet, this slide goes over pending commercial repairs at 158. This is a 1% decrease from 178 at the end of FY '24, quarter two. Progressing to the next slide, again, focusing on pending accident repairs, mostly commercial, at 75. This is a 7%, this is a 7% decrease from 81 at the end of FY '24, quarter two. The total number of pending repairs by 8% from 819 in quarter two to quarter three. This chart gives us a demonstration of the percentage of time by departments spent servicing equipment in quarter three. Departments representing more than 75% of the maintenance hours dedicated by the workers and fleet are APD, DPW, Fire and Rescue, and Parks and Rec. Sorry, let me go back one slide, move forward. Okay. This chart displays availability of all on-road vehicles and off-road heavy equipment in relation to fleet. And on this slide, you can see that in quarter three, fleet completed a total of 1,968 PMs compared to 1,983 PMs completed in quarter two. This does show a decrease of 15 PMs by 1%. Preventive maintenance is extremely important in the life of a vehicle. Every missed PM rolls over to the next month unless the unit is deadline. In our vehicle replacement program on this slide, you will see that fleet received 28 more vehicles in quarter three than in quarter two. This is a 23% increase in inventory from quarter two. This 23% increase in vehicles received from vendors had a positive impact to the total cost for FY '24, quarter three. Although the inventory increased, the cost decreased by 25%, saving 2.7 million from quarter two. Progressing to our safety division of DPW. Would like to communicate that total accidents decreased by 37% from quarter two to quarter three. That is a significant decrease. Although the percentage of preventable accidents did increase, which we are investigating and looking into how, we can continue to keep that 37% decrease progressing forward. This goes, this slide goes over our training and performance metrics. General Safety had a total of 20 employees. Our certified flagger training had a total of 14 employees, and our defensive driving course for the quarter had a total of 38 students. Classroom training. Classroom training was at 17 students, nine have received their permits with eight R waiting testing. And our training and testing in relation to road skills had 21 students, and 17 are CDL certified, and four are waiting testing, showing that DPW is committed to training and ensuring that our individuals are skilled up to do the dedicated work. Moving into HR, we do have a org chart, but it covers just the past quarter. There will be some changes, of course, made to this in the future. The current Department of Staffing, solid waste vacancies are aggressively being sourced and fielded. We have 61 fleet salary adjustments were completed on 4/11. Adjustments aligned parity issuing assisted with retention and recruitment efforts. Not included in authorized counts for 78 extra help and temporary positions. 35 fielded and 41 remain vacant to date. Moving into finance for DPW. On this slide, you will see that the solid waste revenue fund at the end of quarter three, the Department of Public Works used 80% of the budget, primarily to fund personnel expenses of 20 million, vehicle repair and fuel costs of 5.8 million, consulting and professional service fees of 5.7 million, lease equipment payment of 1.8 million, and supplies of 1.5 million. This was primarily in the area of bins. Upcoming reclasses to be performed in quarter four. That's 657,000 of personnel expenses related to old general fund departments will be reclassed out of the solid waste. waste fund to the general fund legislatively. One point eight million of purchased contract services, contracted services related to general fund portion of one point five million in Thorpe to two hundred and forty thousand. General Fund at the end of quarter three, the Department of Public Works used fifty-seven percent of the budget primarily to fund, again, personnel expenses at seventy, at seven point one million, and consulting professional services fees of two point six million, and supplies expenses at four hundred and seventy-one thousand. Vehicle repair and fuel costs of one point three million, and large equipment and vehicle expenses of seventy-five thousand. Specific to the fleet fund, at the end of Q three, actual expenditures were ninety-two percent, or thirty-one point six million of the fleet fund budgeted at thirty-four point four million expenditures were primarily in the areas of salaries and benefits, contracts, supplies, capital purchases, fuel and PM repairs. Talking about an initiative that we've had going where we just, um, launched Phase Three in Operation Clean Sweep. This is an effort to clean, clear, and delitter designated areas and neighborhoods throughout the city that have been plagued with debris and illegal dumping. Community of volunteers assisted in collecting over twenty-four thousand pounds of litter and serviced one hundred and twenty-four miles of roadway. Our dedicated Operation Clean, Clean Sweep staff cleared eight hundred and forty-eight illegal dumping sites, serviced over sixty-one thousand receptacles, and one thousand and one hundred and sixty-seven right-of-way miles. It's a major accomplishment, major accomplishment. At this time, we'd like to highlight one of our frontline heroes. Glad to say that one of our standout supervisors, we'd like to congratulate Solid Waste Route Supervisor Whitney Buford, recipient of the City of Atlanta Woman of Impact Award. She was nominated by her peers to receive this prestigious award. Those within DPW know Whitney very well, know her level of commitment to service, and, um, not only does she service the city well, she's committed to those who are under her leadership, and she's a representation of what leaders in DPW should be about. Want to thank you for your time. That concludes the presentation. Don't know if I hit the fifteen to twenty minutes, though.
In this committee, we, we hope you just get the information out with no people. People really want the information. The customary to any other meeting, thank you so much for this report. We'll start with my colleagues to see if they have any questions. So we'll start off with Mr. Shuck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll be brief. I know you've got an awful lot on your plate. I can't resist giving you the opportunity to hear of my longstanding interest in seeing the Sweet Unit issue citations. We all fully understand issuing citations is not meant to be, you know, a revenue machine, but I don't see how we can alter, repeat bad behavior without the occasional issuance of a citation. So what I would like to see in future reports, um, under the, your, your, your page on that, you know, number of citations issued, if you don't mind, and then in terms of the number of APD cars that you have to repair, uh, you know, you are not the supervisor of the people who operate and drive those vehicles, but you're the one who has to deal with the resulting headache. Given kind of your, what you see in that regard, do you have, if you could just press buttons and change APD behavior so that you don't end up repairing as many cars as you do, what operational changes might you suggest to them?
So, and I, I'd like to address, um, Sweet in, in that I do believe that the citation count will increase with us now progressively right-sizing that organization. I think when we, um, give them the proper resources, having, um, ten as opposed to seven, um, should improve, um, our abilities to hold those accountable who are indeed not in compliance. In relation to APD, I think that one of the things that we're doing in a department and working with our used departments is education. Sometimes we don't do better because we simply don't know better. And I think that understanding the, um, our preventive maintenance in the context of the importance of that, also in relation to sharing the impact that it has to the city, one of the things that we are working on is that our operational software in that area, which is AssetWorks, we recently come out with a new rollout of that, which would give the user of departments more visibility into what's happening in their areas. I think that these kinds of tools will help to improve that relationship, and I think it will also improve downstream to the users of those vehicles.
All right. Well, thank you. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chair. Um, good luck, as I'm sure you already know, but which you will come to know better, this committee takes a really keen interest in, uh, in your operations, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Wong.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm going to try and move quickly through these. Page fourteen, the, the map, um, that has the solid waste services. Obviously, there's a lot of areas that are outside the city limits. Are, are we providing services outside for fee or something, or why are they included in this map?
And so as, as, as you know, some of the areas do bump up and rub up against and overlap. We are in communication in some cases with the entities in those areas as to alert them of things that we're seeing, particularly to illegal dumping. In addition to that, um... So we are not providing services to those areas, but again, I think it is important to show that we do have a relationship and partnership because the broader metro area, a lot of times people don't know the fact that they're coming out of Atlanta or going into another area. So we want beautification for the entire metro area. There are particular services are specific to the city of Atlanta.
All right. So to clarify, what you're saying is those areas on this chart that are outside the city limits are solely reporting. We're just saying, hey, we saw this, y'all need to go take care of it, but we're not actually deploying our folks to go clean up, pick up, or, you know, supply bins and sending suite officers out, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. We're not providing services outside.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Uh, next slide, where you have the, uh, the garbage tonnage, recycling tonnage, and yard trimming. If you could, I'm curious as to what the cost differential is between the three, um, like what tipping fees are, what we pay per ton for recycling as yard trimming. So if that's something you could get to us later, that'd be helpful. Again, um, just, you know, we had this conversation during the budget hearing about what are we doing to make sure we're maximizing the least expensive way of disposing of items? Um, and recycling, we even get a rebate on some items, so I think that will help. And then also, I'm assuming there is a lot of seasonality in these numbers. So if, if, aside from, just additional information, aside from just what we were, um, the year bef- uh, the quarter before, it would also be helpful to know what, uh, if we were the year before, so that, um, we're capturing the seasonality piece of that. All right. While we're talking about recycling, um, and, and kind of it's the same thing, the cleanup, on page twenty-five, the Keep Atlanta Beautiful cleanup events, are, are those teams still taking their, whatever they're picking up and gathering to the Charm facility? Do we know that? And if so, have we resolved the issue about how those materials, Hamish Greenlee, um, are, are being transported? So yeah, I'd like to get a question about that.
Good morning. Kanika Greenlee, Department of Public Works. So are you speaking specifically of Atlanta Recycles Day, those materials on the third Saturday?
Well, when I see this and I see, yeah, the tons collected, I'm just want to know.
So those are specifically speaking of trash tons collected. So, um, any of recycling events, um, we have an electronic processor that we use as outside of Charm.
Okay.
Um, at this current time, um, and then all of the single stream recycling, um, we're processing it ourselves with our.
So the, the slide twenty-five, we keep Atlanta, that's simply trash?
Correct.
That is not, okay, all right. Um, and do we know, I mean, I know that there was, uh, some conversation a year ago about, um, the recycling events, how, uh, just kind of how those materials were being taken to Charm, um, in, in terms of to, it, it kind of hadn't, to maximize that partnership versus just bringing it and dumping it and having the Charm staff sort it out for us?
Yes, we've since had, um, a meeting, um, with Charm on site with, uh, my team and her team.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Greenlee. Next question is on fleet. Um, on page twenty-nine, the commercial repairs, unlike the other one, the spike between fourth week and then the ones that take four weeks or longer, what's, what's the main reason for that? That's over half of them are taking more than four weeks versus, you said, eighty percent of the other category are done within two. Is it parts? Is it, I mean, what, what's driving that? Because that's a long time for those vehicles to be out of commission.
Deputy Commissioner, I, Keith Robinson, I answer that question. Um, some of the delay that we actually see in some of the fleet vehicles are related to different items, you know? So examples, some of them could be from accidents, where we're waiting on that, and then for commercial repairs as well, too. They're facing some of the similar challenges that we're facing in terms of having employees, but also in addition to parts and some of the specialty parts as well, too. Typically, when we do send them out for commercial repairs, they're your larger type of repairs, you know? It could be an engine overhaul or something of that nature. So that's what we see, um, with those commercial repairs.
So it's parts and then types of the, the actual nature of the repair just traditionally takes longer?
That is correct. The stuff that we can do in-house, we do that fairly quick.
All right. I mean, just looking at this, though, I mean, it's, oh, oh, two, almost three hundred vehicles that are then out of commission for four weeks or more. So I appreciate the attention that y'all continue to keep on that metric. Okay, let's get, jump into budget very quickly. The fact that we're at eighty percent and ninety-two percent of solid waste and fleet services for the year in, in the third quarter, um, did I hear you correctly that one of the things is we're going to reclassify some things over to the general fund line item? Is that, did I understand you correctly, or is, are we just expecting we're going to go way over budget in those two categories? And as, as you're walking up to, I mean, the reason why I'm concerned about this is that as we know, the revenues to solid waste are lower than projected, so I, I'm scared that we're going to have this bigger gap, funding gap, um, for an enterprise fund that's already challenged, so.
And, and that's true. And I guess, you know, Director Davis will come up and talk to it a little bit as well, too, but obviously, there is a gap. Part of the, what's driving up the cost for the, um, solid waste revenue side is our personnel cost. Now, there's some items that weren't accounted for, as we talk about the cola, the four twelve, and some of the other things as well, too. And then also, in addition to the rising costs that we're seeing on that fund as well, too. Now, in terms of some of the items that have been separated from the special services, um, Director Davis can kind of talk to that a little bit more, about that more as it relates to the, um, general fund side.
Good morning. Melissa Davis, Finance Director for the Department of Public Works. When the department bifurcated the services between solid waste and the general fund, there were some contracts that had not legislatively, um, allocated the resources in the general fund, so we're still going through that process, and so the reclass is, is moving some of those resources, I think it was about one point eight million dollars, over to the general fund for, um, for Thorpe Security, and also for the, uh, Republic Services for the tonnage for the sweeping program and the right-of-way maintenance tonnage.
But that, so if I, I mean, the general fund line item here is not just, it's the entire department, it's not just solid waste related, correct?
Right. So the general fund, um, allocation is for special services, right-of-way maintenance, fortification, all of those things, but there were some contracts that were still being expensed, there were some expenses that were still hitting the solid waste services revenue funds, and so this is really a cleanup to make sure that we're, um, those costs are being transferred over to the general fund where they should be for those, uh, particular special services.
So my sense of concern is warranted. I mean, again, if revenues are down, we're already seeing these cost overruns, and all you're talking about is shifting a couple of pennies over to the general fund, we're still, we're going to find ourselves in a tough situation when, when all is said and done at the end of fourth quarter, aren't we?
We are, uh, you know, that's, uh, thank you for that question, but yes, we are, uh, we are aware that we have some, um, some challenges with the solid waste, uh, solid waste services revenue fund. Um, as, as you all know, that the, uh, the city, the department is looking at the, uh, the rate increase to try to address some of those issues, um, but we are certainly having some challenges with, um, with this particular fund just to maintain our regular operation.
So I know that we got a paper that we're going to hold later because we're going to have, you know, a series of public input opportunities. I, I think we need to dive into that a little more. I mean, the, the increase that you're asking for is really just inflation to cover inflation. I, I, it still seems to me that there are structural, um, financial things that we're not addressing with our solid way, because I, I thought we had adjusted to address all this, and now we're, you know, we're, we're still in the same situation. So, um, I, let's put a pin in that because we're, we can't, I don't want to keep skirting this, um, because, you know, we, we can't keep chasing this deficit, um, and not figuring out what it is exactly we need to do, uh, aside from just, you know, Band-Aid for inflation costs, um, when there, there seems to be more fundamental challenges. So I appreciate the information, Mr. Chair. That concludes my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. The next speaker would be Councilmember Boone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
I am so excited about, um, your new position, and I, I believe that you are going to do the very best that you can do. I have had very good results, um, from your team, very good results in Southwest Atlanta. They are able to get things done very quickly, and I am looking forward to doing a tour with you and your team. The neighbors in MPUH and NPUI, including MPUT, um, through the South Gordon area, um, are very, very pleased, especially Ms. Mamie Garrett. She wanted me to let you all know that. I want to be consistent because I want to let you know where I stand as far as your department goes. One, I want to make sure that the people, the people that do the jobs that no one else wants to do are treated fairly, treated properly, have the correct, um, compensation, and that you're championing those wages for them. Make sure that in the heated temperatures that they have adequate, um, water, and they are not overworked. I've, I've worked with Public Works a very, very long time, and it's not all about the numbers, it's about the people. I do not want to hear that people are being mistreated, talked down to, not just in the field, but in the department. I recently received a letter and some phone calls about people that have been overlooked for various positions, um, because everybody can't handle power over people. So we are looking at your department. We have a team of people that have, um, spoken with folks, and we want you to get off on the right foot because everybody cannot handle power over people, no matter, no matter what level they are. That will not be tolerated. Um, we are going to be meeting about those particular individuals that are overlooking these people, and that's going to change. That's going to change. So you know who you are? If you've been talking down and mistreating people up on the fourth floor, that's going to stop. I am so very happy, um, to have your team in place, and so very happy to see Mr. Moses back in place. I want to thank you, Mr. Moses, for all you do, those late, late-night calls, all of the things that, um, he does not get credit for. Um, Ms. Tracy Chambers, working on the weekends, um, Mr. New, making sure that illegal dumping, no matter whose area it's in, he always takes care of it. Uh, Mr. Um, Gregory Gray. Do y'all know who Mr. Gregory Gray is? That's an unsung hero in the trenches. You'll never see him, but he carries this department on his back. Ms. Kanika Greenlee, who answers the call. We, we do a lot of text messages when something goes wrong. I know they all talk about it, so everybody starts calling the same four people. We're going to put you on that list now.
Absolutely.
So, again, I am looking forward... So, again, I am looking forward to a tour. I want to see people treated fairly, compensated fairly, and, and those folks that have been not behaving well, not treating people properly, that's going to stop, that's going to stop, because everybody deserves to be treated in a fair manner in the city of Atlanta. On the right side of ML King Jr. Drive, and we'll see this on my, on the tour, from West of U Cemetery, all the way down to the Wayfield Foods, there, there are some beautiful trees that are sitting in square ditches, they're very beautiful, but they now have weeds in those. Want to make sure we, make sure that ML King looks the best that it can be. On the right-hand side, you have Linkwood, you have a mural, you have the CT Martin Rec Center, want to make sure that all of those weeds are out of those ditches, and I look forward to doing a tour with you in the next 10 days. Again, welcome, thank you, and we want to make sure we have a lot of barbecues and picnics and sandwiches for our workers, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Certainly took some notes from, 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 from Weyfus Chair, Councilmember Boone. Without question, fairness and dignity has to be a part of what we do, it has to be at the forefront of what we do. My commitment is to that, the leadership team at DPW's commitment is to that, and that will be reflected in our future state. I do believe that right sizing of organizations can help deter burnout, it can help deter individuals not being able to spend time with their families and take vacations, and so we are doing the good work of right sizing these organizations so that we can honor the commitments to the city while at the same time taking care of the pe, the people that do the work. Thank you so much for your, for sharing.
Do we have any other questions for my colleagues? So I have a few questions myself, I wanted to make sure I pulled it up online, the, I guess I'll get to that one, I'll go page by page. So on the priorities and accomplishments, when fleet command center build out, is that different from the current command center, and will they be combined in the same space?
No, so, so it, there is some variation there, so they're not in the same space. The command center that, that, you actually attended the ribbon cutting ceremony, that command center is here at City Hall and focuses specifically on solid waste services to include special operations. This fleet command center deals with different technology and asset works, which has its own built-in CRM and reporting structure, though the, the individuals that we will be recruiting for that command center would have similar backgrounds in the area of analytics and operations, they will be located in different spaces. The manning of that command center is estimated around, I think, five to six employees to include a manager, and will be located at the fleet headquarters. We do have a space there and are very near the completion of that build out.
Thank you. Page 23. I, I have some constituents in my district who've been, there's one particular constituent, the house was torn down on the land, there's no mailbox there, he received a citation from code enforcement, and it was about some trees that are in his, that, that he put in the right space after cutting his, his yard. He, he put in a request for 301 to come and pick it out, because his address is not, his, he doesn't have a mailbox, he can't get them picked up, and so he continues to get citations from, from our code enforcement because his neighbor is going to continue to report it, and this is on Altaview Drive, Altaview Drive, that, because the address, there's no house there, but it's trees, they're placed in the right manner, everything's actually how it should be, so on Altaview Drive.
Altaview Drive, okay.
And that's on, I was just thinking about that on page 23. On Keep, on page 25, Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission, I got a call last week from some Clark, last month from some Clark Atlanta students, and it's because they, they just went right to Google, and they Googled Keep Atlanta Beautiful because they've been using it before, and right now online, it says it's permanently closed, so we can try to fix that. I think it's permanently closed because of the office, but if we can try to do something to make sure people don't think that Keep Atlanta Beautiful is closed, it says permanently closed online.
So if I may address that, Kanika Greenlee, again, so in 2015, Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission was formed, and we're housed here at the City of Atlanta in the Department of Public Works. Keep Atlanta Beautiful, the nonprofit, is closed, and so that's what they're looking for, but if any resident citizen wants to do a community cleanup, they can email us at kabc@atlantaga.gov.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. The next thing I want to say, the CDL Training Performance Metrics, amazing program, we have to keep that going. I've gotten calls from folks who started off on the back of the truck, and they're so happy because they know they're about to graduate to driving the trucks, and so that, that program, I've seen folks go through it and, and graduate, I've seen people really take care of their families because of that, because of that program, so please keep that program going as much as possible. Lastly, the, on the hiring sheet, on current departmental staffing scorecard, we, from what I see, and you let me know, I'm thinking about entry level position, positions, I see about 147 entry level positions, and if that be the case, as Chair of Utilities, we need to do a hiring fair to try to fit, do these 147, fill these positions as soon as possible, because with this CDL Training Performance Program, and with this, we're going to create some real good middle-class, strong families in the city of Atlanta, some good working-class families in the city. So if possible, tell me how many, if you can, let myself and other council, my colleagues know how many of those positions are entry level, and that's in fleet services and waste services, where you have 75 vacant and 72 vacant, respectively. I want to know the entry level positions so that we can get people in those jobs, and I'll take the point of privilege, try to get some of my work done in my district as well. Fair Drive, Pick Fair Way, if you can, go and, go and put some attention, either with Keep Atlanta Beautiful or with your right, right-of-way folks, if we can get those two streets looked at, Fair Drive and Pick Fair Way. Are there any other questions for my colleagues? One more from Councilmember Boone.
Yes, those solid waste workers and workers in your department, once they retire, make sure we give them a proclamation, a commendation during their retirement, because they do a job, again, that nobody else wants to do, and I want to make sure that we send them off with some type of commendation or framed letter, we will take responsibility for that. Those folks that are on that truck 20 and 30 years, by the time they get off this truck, there's nothing left, so we want to make sure that the city of Atlanta commends them for their service. Please make sure that someone notifies us.
And I want to congratulate you again, but before Council, before Commissioner Wiggins left, we were working on Bromac Drive, I don't know if he relayed that to you, but Bromac Drive, we have, we need a lot of attention on Bromac Drive, from Brownsmere Road to Macon Drive. If we can just get you to pay some attention to Bromac Drive, we have trees hanging in the street and different things going on. Thank you again for, for this, and congratulations again for your, on the appointment to interim commissioner. Mr., anything else for my colleagues? Do you have anything you want to say?
Absolutely, just, just a couple of things I want to know, Chairman Lewis. So in relation to some of the things that you called out, we have established a high priority customer engagement team, so we've noted what you have, what you shared, sometimes 311, some things can fall through the gaps, so they do a very, very good job. We established this team specifically for the kinds of things that you pointed out, so that we can capture them, send out our teams accordingly, and follow back up with the constituent, and oftentimes, if it comes from a council member, we'll follow back up with your office as to let you know, kind of closing the loop in that circle to let you know the outcomes.
You, you've done an amazing job for us, but the 311 in my district, a lot of folks don't call it, the way that we're promoting, I'm going to reach out to the administration about this, the way that we're promoting the most campaign, we need to promote 311, so the exact same promotion, it's, let's just replicate it, it won't be to you, it would be a conversation with the, with the administration, but thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, can you please move on to the consent agenda, sir?
Section G Communications, item number 124C5068, a communication from Al Wiggins Jr., Commissioner of Department of Public Works, designating Ms. Chiquita Smith to serve as a member of the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission, this appointment's for a term of two years.
It's Ms. Smith here. Good morning, Ms. Smith.
Good morning, everyone.
Ms. Smith, you want to serve on, you, you've been appointed and recommended for this committee, can you tell us a little about yourself?
Yes, of course, my name is Chiquita Smith, I'm a business owner in the city of Atlanta, I'm a speech-language pathologist, and I provide speech and occupational therapy to the children in our community. We primarily only serve children that are in our inner city, we only serve children that are Medicaid eligible, or Title I eligible, or children who are in dire needs of services, so that's what we do here in the city of Atlanta.
Any questions for my colleagues?
Over approval.
Mr. Shook had a question.
No, no, I just want to say that she's a constituent of District 7.
I am.
A great neighborhood of Pine Hills, and I think it's important for us to know that, in addition to wanting to serve in this capacity, she is also already a member of the Solid Waste Appeals Board, so, good for her.
And, and that, that's awesome to hear from Mr. Shook, it's been moving properly second, moved by Councilmember Boone and second by Councilmember Bond. Mr. Johnson, can you please open the vote? Amos, I apologize, Amos.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable.
Congratulations, and I know you've done this before, but welcome to the board.
Thank you, I look forward to serving.
Mr. Johnson, can we go to the next item, please?
This takes us to our first reads, Section H, ordered for first reading, item number 22401235, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee, authorizing Chief Financial Officer to amend the FY 2024 wastewater, water and wastewater renewal and extension fund budget in amount of $2,500,000.00 to transfer funds from watershed reserves for appropriations and add funds to the program management services team project and for other purposes. Item number 32401236, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to amend the FY 2024 water and wastewater renewal and extension fund budget in amount of $4,833,343.16 to transfer funds from watershed reserves for the appropriations and add funds to the Parrot Properties Acquisition Project and for other purposes. Item number 42401237, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee to ratify services rendered in connection with agreement listed herein, annual contract for municipal solid waste with Republic Services of Georgia, limited partnership and Genesis Testing Services Incorporated doing business as 3GNL Joint Venture beginning April 11, 2024, and to authorize the mayor or his designate to exercise the first renewal option under the agreement on behalf of the Department of Public Works for a term of one year retroactively effective from April 13, 2024 through April 12, 2025, in amount not to exceed $5 million in accordance with Section 2-1163 Subsection C of Article 10, procurement and real estate code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, all contract work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 52401238, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an amendment in connection with agreement listed herein, OEM and aftermarket repair, parts and services for passenger vehicle, light, medium, heavy-duty trucks, vans and SUVs on behalf of the Department of Public Works, Office of Fleet Services to extend the term of the agreement retroactively effective February 20, 20, February 25, 2024, for a period of nine months and for other purposes. Item number 62401239, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designate, or the chief procurement officer or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to acquire from the Conservation Fund approximately 17.77 acres of real property known as 3141 Parrot Avenue Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia 30318, landlot tracks 1, 4, and 5 in Fulton County, Georgia, tax parcel ID numbers listed herein, for the purpose of warehouse space and to execute all documents necessary to acquire the property and authorize acquisition due diligence, closing costs, signage, demolition, site security and stabilization, fencing, and other site development costs in amount not to exceed $4,833,343,016 to be paid from the fund and account information listed herein, waiving Section 2-1541D of procurement and real estate code and for other purposes. This takes us to our regular agenda, Section I, ordered for second reading, item number 72401192, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee, authorizing Chief Financial Officer to amend the FY 2024 water and wastewater renewal and extension fund budget in amount of $2,700,000.00 to transfer funds from watershed reserves for the appropriations and add funds to the CCTV upgrade project and for other purposes.
Do we have anything from the department?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chairman Lewis, councilmembers, Sterling Graham, the director for the Office of State Security Emergency Management, Department of Watershed Management. This legislation aims to amend the FY 24 Water and Wastewater Renewal and Extension Fund Budget to transfer $2.7 million to the CCTV upgrade project. This project will upgrade the network infrastructure and associated closed-circuit television equipment for approximately 20 DWM facilities. This project will also replace end-of-life network equipment and upgrade the video management system, making it compatible and unifying it with the APD Secure Operations Center. These improvements will greatly enhance our security posture for protecting critical infrastructure. This concludes my remarks, I will be happy to address any questions you may have.
Been moved by Councilmember Shook, second by Councilmember Lewis, please open the vote. Thank you, Mr. Sterling.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. Item number 82401193, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee, waiving the requirements of Section 2-910 of the Atlanta City Code to retroactively authorize the mayor's designate, including the Commissioner of the Department of Watershed Management, on behalf of the City of Atlanta to apply for grant funding from the United States Environmental Protection Agency's Fiscal Year 2024 Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program, in amount of $175,000.00 for the purpose of diverting gas emissions from landfills and carbon dioxide due to transport to renewable energy and for other purposes, and Mr. Chair, the department requests this item be held.
So, moved by Council, moving properly second, moved by Councilmember One, second by Councilmember Shook, Mr. Johnson, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item is held in committee. Item number 92401214, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee, on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Public Works, to amend Code Section 130-84 of Chapter 130, Solid Waste Management, Article 3 Municipal Collection and Disposal System, Division 4 Raising Charges of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to adjust the taxes, assessment, service fees and charges for solid waste services specified therein and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, this item will need to be held for a public hearing, the public hearing will be scheduled on June 11th.
Moving to, moving properly second by Councilmember Shook, Mr. Johnson, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item is held in committee. Item number 102401227, an ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, authorizing the mayor's designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to accept a donation of an easement from Atlanta Independent School System for the purpose of installing two historical markers on the campus of Frederick Douglass High School to commemorate the status of the school as a civic institution, to authorize the mayor or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute the easement agreement and for other purposes.
Second.
And moving properly second, moved by Councilmember Amos, second by Councilmember Boone, Mr. Johnson, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable. Mr. Chair, this item is a dual legislation and it will refer to, to CDHS.
Thank you.
This takes us to Section J Resolutions, item number 1124R3551. A resolution by Councilmember Andre L. Boone, authorizing the mayor's designate, including the Chief Sustainability Officer on behalf of the city of Atlanta to apply for a, a reimbursable grant funding from the United States Department of Energy in the amount of $3,600,000.00 to fund the installation of solar and battery stores at strategic city of Atlanta building locations to create resilience hubs, authorizing the mayor or his designate, including the Chief Sustainability Officer, to execute any required documents and for other purposes.
Over approval.
Moved and properly second, moved by Councilmember Boone, second by Councilmember Amos. Mr. Johnson, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable. Mr. Chair, we have one item coming off held on page eight, item number 13, my sound the caption.
Please do.
Item number 1824R3457. A resolution by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into a memorandum of understanding and contract item agreement with the state of Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for the purpose of adjusting water and sewer infrastructure that conflicts with the Department of Transfer Station's Milling and Resurfacing Project along State Route 70 from State Route 139 to State Route 8 in Fulton County in an amount not to exceed $192,471.78. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Anything from the department?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chairman Lewis and other committee members. Reginald Wells, Assistant Commissioner, Department of Department of Watershed Management. This item would ultimately allow us to make the necessary adjustments to our water and sewer assets in the delineation of the project. Specifically, we have 27 water vials, 12 sewer manholes along this project that we'll need to adjust and actually lower to ensure the paving, the milling and paving operation can go forth without impact. This agreement allows the work to be completed within GDOT's contract that will allow us to prevent any delays in the project and be subject to any penalties or anything. I ask that you guys approve this and thank you.
Mr. Wells, thank you. So moved. Wait, any questions for my colleagues?
Second.
Seeing none, been moved by myself and seconded by Councilmember Matt Westmoreland. Mr. Johnson, please open the vote.
The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable. Mr. Chair, that concludes our legislative items for today.
Do I have any last comments for my colleagues? Congratulations again, Mr. Garmin, and meeting adjourned.